...to order for, I lost my thing. Is today the thirteenth?
Yes.
Tuesday, September thirteenth. Future agenda items. Nobody? Okay. And discussion item sixteen five fifteen, discussion of Oregon City's utilization of Clackamas County's proposed fuel tax, should it pass, which I have serious doubts about.
Thank you, Mayor, for adding this to your work session agenda and Commissioners for adding this to your work session agenda. So this topic has been at the county level for several years, actually, some way to fund road maintenance inside the county. And they have pulled the trigger on proposal. And so I'm going to go through a little bit of that proposal, not in an advocating way, just informational way. And then I really, it's unfortunate Commissioner Mingleberg is not here because she was one who was kind of pressing the idea of maybe providing some definition around what maybe the city would do with the money that might come from a fuel tax if it were to pass. So, let's see, you handed me the quicker than you. So what's being proposed is a six cent per gallon gas tax for a period of seven years. And then at the end of that seven years, it would either dissolve or they'd add another measure and continue. And right now, they're proposing, and I think the idea would be that the cities would sign an agreement by which forty percent of that revenue that comes out of the gas tax would be-
Let me stop, that's incorrect. The way it's phrased on the ballot is the cities will get forty percent, periods, there's no agreement required.
Forty percent of that will come to the cities, and then the split would be based on population. For Oregon City, it's just under six hundred thousand per year. And we understand that they're planning to distribute that twice a year. It's a little questionable about when they would actually implement and make their first payment, but we're expecting something maybe in March of two thousand seventeen, if it were to pass. Cost to the average driver, based, and this is the county's number, based on average miles driven, is about twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per year. Just to give you an idea, the county has actually produced a list of projects and, or packages, if you will, as to how they would spend that, those revenues for, using their sixty percent. So this is a county-wide map. None of those projects are inside the city, or the cities, as far as I know. I actually didn't look at city limits for other cities, but it's definitely not inside of our city. I think they start the Beaver Creek Road project, which gets closest to us, just outside the city limits. But there's various packages, most of them run in that range of four to five million dollars per package. And so that's, again, information for your, the other thing that they're proposing is three point seven million dollars for safety improvements, which would be signage and striping and rumble strips along, kind of the, a rumble strip is just kind of a profiled strip along the edge of the pavement, so cars go off the edge, they kind of wake up to that.
Wake up.
And so total paving that they're showing is a hundred and fifteen miles at thirty-two million, two hundred and eighty-two thousand seventy-two. So a little bit of information about the county's proposal, their use. So in thinking about this a little bit, you know, we haven't done the work that the county has done in terms of packaging and estimating these projects. In fact, I'm not sure how certain the county's numbers are, to be honest with you. They, some of the staff folks I talked to were a little bit nervous about providing the numbers that they provided in terms of value and the number of miles and how much they could commit to, because they haven't done all the engineering on that, nor have we. So we wanted to group these into categories of projects so that the community would understand we don't have a developed list, we have lots of projects and several have estimates to them, but we haven't gone to the effort of, gone through a community process to inform that plan. And we think, once we learn of these dollars, it would make sense, whether or not we were going to get these dollars, it would make sense to open it up for some community discussion about how maybe we spend the funding that we would get.
Don't we already have a transportation system plan and a list of projects that are on the list to be done?
We have a transportation system plan, and it's got a lot of projects in it. We're going to be bringing that to you in the next month, but it's a long list and it's somewhat prioritized, but priorities change and, you know, I think there's a lot of caveats to this besides just the transportation system plan.
Okay.
So the, these are the categories, improved community health and safety, so safety projects. Expand the money match on local and regional grant opportunities, so more and more we're finding for projects, for instance, the Malala Avenue project is our latest grant attempt, and it's similar to what we did a couple of years ago for the Metro Regional Flex Funds. We're committing to a match of fifty percent of an eight million dollar project. So that's four million dollars that the city would need to contribute to that overall project, and having some of these kind of funds at those, when we make those kind of commitments would be helpful. We can do that project without these funds, so we made that commitment, or we figured that commitment ourselves. We're actually going to ask you to approve that commitment in a resolution next meeting, but that's an example. Same thing with any of our other grant projects. We typically need more match money, especially as competitive as they get, you know, the better we can do to match, the more likely it'll be we'll get the grant. Improved connectivity and connected multimodal transportation systems through complete streets. So that's areas that maybe don't have sidewalk connections or bike lane connections, or maybe even roadway connections, but complete those streets. So, you know, places along, the one I think, one example I think of is, we'll show you examples of each of these is Partlow Road. We've got some sidewalks and places where there's definitely gaps. So I'll show you a few more of those. Emphasize the effect and efficiency management of the transportation system. Probably the best example about that is the Roundabout up at Warner Millie and Warner Parrot. But there's other things like signals, signalization and connectivity between our signals. And then it just really allows more opportunities to leverage the city's transportation funding. So again, when we do bring forward the new or updated TSP project list, you'll find in that that some of those projects are fully funded with transportation system charges, others are only covered, transportation system funds only cover the growth component. So we have projects in town that we don't have, you know, we don't have the other, the other proportion of the funding for that. We have, we'll be collecting the transportation SDCs, but how it gets funded on the other side, we typically don't have the gas taxes needed to cover those, so it's usually a grant. Or we've been using pavement maintenance utility fees to some degree to help kind of essentially match for those projects as well, so. Those are the categories we came up with, and, you know, again, this is something only staff, we haven't vetted any of this, this is just something staff came up in regards to the requests that we heard, that you folks wanted to hear. So I'm just going to go through the projects that we think are great examples of these categories, so that you get, you know, better understanding of what we're thinking, and they're general in nature. I can, we do have, some of them, we do have estimates for, others we don't, but, so just maybe I'll start with the pictures. That's the rapid flashing beacon that's there at the library at Seventh and John Adams. And then the other one is just a picture of one of our utility seasonal workers putting down crosswalks and thermal plastic, so he's heating that stuff up and melting it down. So those are the kind of projects that we could allocate some of this funding towards and doing a better job with. Signalized pedestrian crossings, you know, there's a high demand for those. In our TSP, there's several of those suggested. Safe routes to school, I think, Gardner Middle School, where it's, you know, there's a lot of students that probably don't walk that could walk because, you know, between Lynn Avenue and the school, there's very little sidewalk there. So that might be an example of a way to spend those, that funding. And then you're all familiar with the intersection of Twelfth and Washington, and adding that signal, we estimate that signal, we're actually moving forward with the design work on that, but we have a TSP estimate of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to put that signal in. So where we come up with that funding, some of it's going to be SDC fundable, but not all of it.
We're going to put a signal at Twelfth and Washington?
We are.
So since we fixed the flashing Ls and the Reds, have we had another accident?
You mean since we, since there was the last incident where we shut things down and we reconfigured-
Yeah, and we repaired the fact that the beacon lights were gone and we put them back in place and all that?
Not that I know of, not that I know of, but the warrants, what we did after that, we committed to doing after we closed that down was to do a before and after study, update the studies that we've done over the years at that intersection. And the signal warrants are met for that particular intersection, so. By the time we get around to funding it and building it, we're, we know even more of the warrants that we justify signals for will be met. The money match for grant opportunities, Main Street is, you know, the last go-around. We were able, again, we made a commitment then to fund that. Had we gotten the grant, we didn't get the grant, but again, I think if we have more money match for projects like that, the McLaughlin Boulevard Phase Three, Malala Avenue Phase Four, and then Holcomb Boulevard is another location where we've heard from the community that they'd like to see sidewalk, bike lanes widening, curbs, you know, extend what was done several years ago along Holcomb Boulevard. So that's another area where we could match, and we've estimated those projects, and they vary from about one and a half million to sixteen million. Actually, the McLaughlin Boulevard Phase Three, if you have to deal with the bridge, the viaduct, it's quite a bit more than even sixteen million, so. Expensive projects, you know, obviously, this isn't enough funding to help to build all those, but they're, those are the kinds of things we want to prioritize and make decisions on. Again, the multimodal complete street, we've heard a fair amount recently from the community about what will we do with pedestrians that are trying to get from the Cove to Maine, to the downtown. So that's one of those areas where completing the sidewalks would be helpful and encourage more walking between those two locations. I mentioned Partlow Road, Myers Road, we did the Myers Road. Oh, it's called the Lynn Avenue, Leland Myers Road Concept Plan. So there's lots of projects within that, that complete distance between, here we're listing Claremont to Frontier Parkway, but Lynn Avenue to Frontier Parkway, so those are kind of, that's duplication of those two projects, but really, from Jackson Street to Frontier Parkway, we don't have a lot in roadway movements there, and there's a lot of gaps, so we should probably look at trying to complete. Again, effective, efficient management of our transportation system, the Myers Road Extension's a good example of that. A lot of the improvements that I mentioned earlier on the, on the concept plan for Lynn, Leland Road. Signal interconnects, we've got needs there. We've talked about along two thirteen, advanced warning signals to help let people know how long it's going to take them to get down the hill so that they can manage some of the congestion we see at Beaver Creek in two thirteen. Anything we can do in a way of better connecting signals and timing those signals, those will all be projects that we can spend this revenue on. And then, again, helping to leverage development initiatives, the school districts agreed with their bus facility to improve portions of Loder Road, but it's really through their site and not necessarily getting it all the way connected to Beaver Creek Road, so that's an option. We've got the South End Concept Plan, where there's lots of suggested projects there that we could definitely contribute when development is ready to move in those areas. And, yeah, Maple Lane intersection and some of the development that we're hearing about that could happen along Maple Lane. So we think, you know, there's way more project than what this funding package would provide, and having a little bit of flexibility with how to marry up SDCs, with pavement maintenance dollars, with some of these gas tax dollars, would just mean more projects would be completed. And I didn't have a question slide, but that's the end of my presentation. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
It didn't take long to burn through five hundred thousand dollars, did it?
It really does not.
No.
And that's, I think, the same problem the county's facing. I think they put together a decent project list and, you know, committing to making those kind of decisions now, for us, seems a little early.
Well, I think it is early, because I think the fact is, is I haven't seen any action on any kind of advocacy to pass the thing. So without some organization out there actually doing some advocacy work, I think it's doomed, but we'll see. I wouldn't spend a whole lot of staff time figuring out how we're going to spend this money until after the first Tuesday in November.
I was thinking about the Beaver Creek Road employment area. I know that's a county road, but we're talking about doing engineering and infrastructure there, would this be a potential source to help out on that?
It could be, that would be a, you know, again, a good conversation to have. It is a county road at that section. We are proposing to, well, actually Eric Underwood's working on a design project for sewer, right? So we're moving forward with the sewer design. And, yeah, I mean, we don't have a funding source identified for the road over there. Most of those would be developer-driven, but my guess is that they would want reimbursement through SDCs for some of that, so there's SDC funding that could be available for that. But I know it won't cover it all.
Any questions? Okay. Oh, so somebody knows how to use the computer. No one else ever does. Nancy?
So it seems to make sense to use the five hundred or six hundred thousand a year for various projects around the city, but if we took all of it at once and used it for one large project, would we have to wait until like after the seven years? Or is there a way we could borrow the future money and then do one large project? And if we did that, what options might we have?
We'd have to think about that. Borrowing, it'd have to be internal from our own funds.
Yeah.
And so I'd want to work with my, I don't know, partner, Wyatt here.
I think if we have, let's assume it does pass, then we have a revenue stream that we know is coming in, couldn't we sell the revenue line?
It's possible, Mayor, if someone will lend us the funds, and if we went through, as you know, the vote process to do that.
Sure.
If it's possible.
There may be benefits to doing that, because construction costs continue to go up, and if you can bond, then your money goes a lot further.
Yeah, good point, Commissioner.
So that's almost, what, five thousand, five million dollars? What project would cost about five million dollars in the city, you know? That's probably asking too much for-
More than fifteen or twenty, probably.
Well-
I'm sure.
And we did, I did have some numbers specific to projects. Let's see if I can find one that's five million dollars. Well, the Malala Avenue was five million, was an eight million dollar project, and we were proposing to match four. There's a section of Lynn Avenue from Fifth to Park, which was a little over five million dollars, so doing that whole widening up Lynn Avenue, which might be a good idea. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of the question is, do we, do we put all our funding into one project, or do we try and spread it around? I don't have that answer. I think there's lots of options.
I think we'll have a better idea when we see the transportation plan and that list you already have. And then, because I understand, we'd like to throw it at one project, but there's a lot of safety issues. I don't know, and that's, I guess, that's where we've got to set our priorities, is whether it's like to the industrial part of it, and, or look at the safety issues of sidewalks, like down Holcomb or Lynn Avenue and stuff, so. Like to see your list that you already have, and I guess that's going to come before.
Yeah, I most prefer the idea of combining funds where we can find a way to backfeed those, so if it's an SDC-funded project, but only fifty percent of it's SDC-funded and we don't have the other, it'd be nice to get some of those accomplished. And then maybe hold off, like, I think, you know, some of that concept plan area, most of those are a hundred percent SDC-funded, because they're all new roads and they're based on new growth out in those areas, so probably wouldn't want to target any of those and just wait until the time is right, when those are, when we have the SDCs to be able to build those.
Has the Traffic Advisory Committee or Transportation Advisory Committee, I'm assuming there is one, have they weighed in on this?
Well, they haven't, our first meetings, because they don't have meetings in the summer, so is this month, so it's on their agenda.
Okay, that it? Then we'll move along to item three B, sixteen dash five eleven, previously transcribed meeting minutes and options for casting both, Ms. Riggs.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I have prepared a presentation this evening regarding two housekeeping items, approving old or previously transcribed minutes that have never been approved, and discussing the Commission's preference on future voting at the dais. According to the Oregon City Municipal Code, Section two point zero four zero one zero in the recording section, the recorder shall attend all meetings of the, of the Commission and keep an accurate record of its proceedings, and file and keep all books, papers, maps, and records connected with the business of the Commission. And with the Oregon Public Meetings Law, Section one nine two point six five zero one, Sections A through E explains what should be included in meeting minutes, all members of a governing body who are present, all motions, proposals, resolutions, orders, ordinances, measures, propose, and their disposition, the results of all votes, and the votes of each member by name, the substance of any decision on any matter, and subject to ORS one nine two point four one zero to one nine two point five zero five relating to public records, a reference to any documents discussed at the meeting. So as you know, there are three different forms of recording minutes, and again, according to the Oregon Public Meetings Law, Section one nine two point six five zero, the governing body of a public body shall provide for sound, video, or digital recording, or the taking of written minutes of all of its meetings. Neither a full transcription nor a full recording of the meeting is required, except as otherwise provided by law, but the written minutes or recording must be given, or must give, a true reflection of the matters discussed at the meeting and the views of the participants. So what does it mean to approve minutes? It's important to understand that what is meant by approving the minutes, it is not an approval of what was done or the decisions made. It is simply confirming that the minutes are an accurate record of what took place. The Commission as a whole continues to legally exist even if specific members come and go over time. According to Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, eleventh edition, page three fifty five, three hundred and fifty-five, a member's absence from the meeting for which minutes are being approved does not prevent the member from participating in either correction or approval of those minutes. Some Commissioners on boards, some Commissioners and board members may be concerned that the minutes could contain errors of which they would not be aware of, and that they were not in attendance at the meeting, so they would not recall the decisions that were made. That's okay, because Robert's Rules of Order also note that if there are some future, if in some future date, an error is discovered, they can be corrected with an amendment to already approved minutes. As part of an entire process to review the minute backlog of various boards and committees in the city, this is only the beginning. The City Recorder's Office would like to try to get a better handle on keeping up with the meeting minutes. This chart shows you what you, the Urban Renewal Commission, and the Planning Commission may see over the next several months. I hope with this presentation, it provides you with the information and the confidence you need to approve these minutes as they come before you. I will be providing the other boards and committees similar information, so that they too will feel comfortable in approving old or previously transcribed minutes. Are there any questions on the minute section of this presentation before we move to the voting section?
Yes, some of the vintage, like nineteen ninety-nine, there's nobody here on this dais today that was there then, so that's very awkward to be approving minutes that nobody was at.
Well, but we have video recordings of those meetings, right?
We have some audio and some video recordings that go pretty far back, including the nineteen ninety-nines, some of the nineteen ninety-sixes. But as you get even earlier, there aren't audio or video recordings of those. The earliest, or the-
Furthest back?
Furthest back that I will ask you to approve is nineteen ninety-six, and we do have audio recordings of those. If you want to listen to them and then approve the minutes, you can. They have been listened to to verify that the minutes that we're bringing before you are accurate to the best of our ability, and you can always approve them and then listen to it later and make a correction if you feel it's necessary. But again, the main point of the minutes are not a verbatim, it's just to basically get the, any decisions or information that was passed along to designate, like appointments or tasks, that sort of stuff, documented. And those items, we've gone back through and reviewed the tapes and reviewed the transcripts to make sure that that, that information is listed there. Any other questions on that? Okay. So with the electronic voting, prior to electronic voting, the City Recorder did a roll call vote and tallied the votes on a piece of paper. As part of an open and transparent government, the previous Commission approved a contract with Granicus to provide electronic voting in two thousand twelve. At that time, the Commission would use the touchscreen monitors at the dais to place their votes. The results would then be displayed on the TV up here on the wall, and along with that, the mayor would confirm the results aloud. In May, or I'm sorry, in January of two thousand fifteen, Mayor Holliday asked that the Commission place their votes electronically, and also that there be a roll call allowed for allowing each individual Commissioner to verbalize how they had voted. Since there, since then, there has been a change on the Commission, and I wanted to bring back for you the options of how the Commission could vote at the dais in the future. There are three options before you. Option number one, verbal roll call, rotating which Commissioner is called upon first, then place the electronic vote. Option number two, place the electronic vote, then verbal roll call, always starting from the left, the furthest left on the dais, with usually Commission position number one, and moving all the way down to the right, to state the vote that has already been placed on the electronic device in front of you and locked in, so that you can't change your vote. Option number three, all Commissioners place their electronic votes using the electronic voting system, and the mayor reads the results verbally into the record. As I had stated in my staff report, I would prefer- As I had stated in my staff report, I would prefer, I would respectfully recommend that the Commission go with option number two. Um, I can make sure to pause, allowing each of the commissioners to place their votes and lock them in before we place the verbal roll call so that no commissioner could change their vote during their verbal roll call, if that is what the Commission prefers. And this is open for discussion.
Well, why, why do you prefer option two?
I prefer option two because I feel like that's what we've somewhat been doing up to this point, with the exception of I have not locked in the votes before I've called the verbal roll call. I've allowed you to place the votes, but I didn't lock them in because I didn't think that there was an issue with folks changing their votes. But allowing the locked-in version allows it, the results to display up on the screen as I'm verbally calling it.
Comments?
So I guess...
Commissioner Smith?
Go ahead.
All right, I guess I think that option one is the fairest because people may be swayed by how other commissioners are leading. They may want to take a little bit of time to explain why they vote, why they voted the way they did. And that explanation might change somebody's mind, especially if it's a controversial vote, which we've had a few of. And so I guess that's the one I prefer.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, option one is the way we've always done it, or at least we've done it since I've been here and since we've changed to, um, the, um, computer system. I, I think my questions, so I lean that way, but I have questions about the system. The problem that I have is if we are all asked to do an electronic vote before we say it verbally, even if it's taken off of that screen, if it's seen on this screen, it says that this whole Commission knows exactly what the votes are before the public knows. And I have a real problem with that. I don't know if that's the case. Um, if, if there's no votes on our screen and no votes on that screen until we actually call it, then I think that's different. I also feel though that we should be consistent. If you are going to make a motion, at least since, um, we've kind of been on the system, previous Commissions were, um, operating under, do not make a motion until you have, or do not hit the button, um, making an electronic motion unless you've stated it verbally so that the public knows that you're making that motion. So after the motion, you would hit that. After this person seconded, they would hit second. And so for me, that should be done after the vote. If we were voting, it would be consistent with making a motion and then doing the electronic version, making the second, then doing the electronic button, and then taking your vote and doing it electronically. I think the public should hear what's happening before it's, before anyone else does.
So I have a question, um, because I don't, I haven't been paying attention to the electronic part except for actually voting, so, and I, I guess just Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Shaw, have you actually been punching the motion and second buttons?
Absolutely. I always do.
No.
Okay.
And the only reason I have not been, the only reason I have not been putting in to speak on the thing is because, you know, fifty percent of the time, the system's not working. And so we've gone back to just, you know, saying it's time for me to speak. So if the system was working, we should be watching the tally on there and...
Yeah, and I would utilize it too. So I, I think to answer that piece of the question, I think we all need to spend fifteen minutes being trained on the usage of the system. Because I'm not sure, like I said, I didn't even know there was a button for motion and a second, because I don't make motions.
Commissioner I?
So if, um, if we could make it, make the system so that when you touch yes or no, that no one else around you could see what you're voting, and then at, and then once everyone has voted, you locked it in, and then had your, your verbal, um, to me, the verbal part of it is for the public to be able to hear and to see. Seeing on the monitor, hearing in, here in the chambers verbally, um, what, what the total vote probably was.
I'm going to give my preference, and I think you're...
Can I say one more thing first? And I prefer option two because that, um, it, um, the electronic part of it, I think I know a little bit about this.
I was going to ask if you wanted to give the presentation.
But the electronic part of it, um, as far as the, uh, it, it actually puts it electronically into the system, and it alleviates a lot of errors down the road because, um, you know, it, uh, that it, when the person that does the minutes goes to do the minutes, then it's already captured in the minutes. And it's, it's sort of, the minutes are kind of done automatically. So, um, as far as the motions and the votes.
No, I know, but I don't see, I don't understand the electronic difference between us voting one at a time and clicking the button one at a time, and all voting at once and locking it in. I don't understand that.
I don't, we could do it all at once.
Wasn't there, wasn't there a discussion at one point of just trying to get a vote? Everyone voting at the same time seemed more fair when we had the technology available to do it as opposed to someone voting a posi, a tough position where they happened to know it was going to pass and then could take the, the other vote out. I mean, essentially, you got three votes for yes, oh, I can take the safe spot and vote no. It puts the people who vote first in a very tough position as to those going last, was, was some of the original discussions on, on the, on the system.
Which it was all, why it was always rotated.
Right.
Yeah, and I...
To try to alleviate that.
I am, again, I'm back to one. I think, um, uh, I, I agree with Commissioner Mengelberg. There are times when myself or Commissioner Smith or somebody else may want to explain why they're voting the way they're voting before they actually click the button. Um, I think there's also a matter of, you know, taking a tough position, well, you know, we all asked to be here, so sometimes you gotta take tough positions and not just, you know, the way the cookie crumbles. So I, I prefer to have the vote rotate and, um, to be able to hear or get a sense of where other people are. I think pretty much by the time we get to an end of discussion, it's, it's pretty clear where everybody is. So I don't, I don't think anybody's being sneaky about this, so. Uh, I, I just like for the public to be able to say, okay, I heard the mayor cast his vote, and then it was recorded electronically or whichever commissioner it happens to be. So I'm, I'm at one.
And I, I would, I would, I would like to see that when we, we state our vote, so the vote is called and we state our vote, and we click it, that it goes on that board exactly as we do it.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was wondering if you'd be willing to do a test, um, right now? Um, do you have the option on your screen to motion? To push the motion button currently?
No.
On the floor. See, I don't have the motion, I don't have a motion and a second because, uh, I don't, I don't get...
No, none of you do right now, then. If, if one of you doesn't, then you all do not have that button. Uh, we're currently, as I mentioned, um, I think it was last week or the week before, we're in transition with doing some technical changes with the Granicus system. We've just changed over to a new encoder. Um, that is one of the reasons why the display, um, monitor wasn't working last meeting, and now that has been fixed, and this is still an issue and it's still pending to be resolved. They had told me today it was resolved, and apparently it is not.
So we can't do a test?
I do want to test one more thing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, if you don't mind, I will go ahead and, um, do a motion and a second. So I'm just going to say that Brian Shaw, um, is the mover, and the seconder is Nancy I'd. And if I push the record and start voting button, would you please, uh, go ahead and push the vote to see if you can see each other's?
No.
I cannot.
We cannot.
No, I can just see my vote. That has since been fixed.
Okay.
And you can't see it up here either, um, because I asked, uh, the Granicus system to remove that feature, which then removed it from each of you individually being able to see, uh, who's voting which way until I lock in. So let me, you've all placed your votes, let me go ahead and record that really quickly. And now it displays on the screen.
So you were saying you wanted it to show up instantly rather than...
Well, I, I think it needs to be consistent. I, I guess the problem, even though we don't see it, everyone's vote on our screen, we can see everyone's vote right here. So if we all click that button, I can say, okay, all those are yeses and those are yeses, so I already know.
Which is why I think that the verbal rotating verbal roll call is better because...
Yeah, absolutely, and that's why we've always done it.
Okay, is that...
So, so basically you're just saying, do you want the roll call before or after?
Yeah.
Uh, we, we, okay, do the electronic.
So we're going to do the roll call. When you say, I'm voting aye, that's when you push your button.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing is you want me to do the verbal first, and I will rotate who gets to be chosen first, and as you're doing that, you would push your button.
Right, yeah.
Is that, is that important to us as a Commission that, that she rotated?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, because I'm usually number one down here.
You know, you don't have one person always being first.
Never had that before.
I understand.
Because then the other person at the end, I mean, I, I get the advantage of always being last, but, you know, the rest of you...
I, I get it, I, I get it, I just was...
And so with doing that then too, you're not all placing your votes at the same time, and you're able to hear which each of you are making a decision. So, um, that could sway your votes, and if you're comfortable with that, then we will do it that way.
That's politics.
Okay. Then that's how we will do it, starting the very next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much for this.
And, uh, and can you schedule a, like a five or a ten-minute training thing before the next meeting? So we can all sit down and see how it works and become...
Could, could we do it at the following one? I will not be attending the next meeting.
Sure.
Thank you.
And can we include a, a training on the, the request to speak button?
Absolutely.
What?
If you want, if you want to speak, push the button.
Put another button on her.
Believe me, it's not as easy.
Okay, so, uh, I, I added one item to the agenda. Um, we need to have a discussion. Commissioner Smith and I attended a sort of ad hoc public meeting in West Lynn a couple, three weeks ago, talking about governance change at tri-cities. In attendance were representatives from Oregon City, Gladstone, West Lynn, Happy Valley, and Milwaukee. The representative from West Lynn is, uh, conflicted about whether tri-city should be just tri-cities or whether that should include a broader group of cities, um, having the discussion. So, um, I don't know how much briefing Nancy has had. Did you, did you get any kind of update from the city manager on this?
Um, not, just not really, just what I've been reading.
Okay. And Commissioner Mengelberg?
Uh, no recent briefing, but I did see the letter from Mr. Ludlow today.
So it has been Oregon City's position since, at least, at least since I've been mayor, that we were looking for a change in governance at tri-cities to include just the three cities. And I don't believe that our opinion of that has changed. If someone thinks it has, please say so now. But moving forward, um, I believe, and I'll let Commissioner Smith, you know, give his opinion, but I believe that the only way we're going to get responsible governance at tri-cities is for the three cities to work together to make that happen. If we aren't all three together, it's never going to happen. We're never going to be able to get the, either the votes in the legislature or some other place to be able to, to, to make that occur. Obviously, I said at this meeting, I would be willing to talk about the five cities going together and doing something different than just tri-cities. Maybe it would be, the county has the unincorporated stuff, and the five cities have all of, you know, a, all of our stuff. I think that's a longer question. I think there are a lot of issues that would have to be worked out as far as, you know, who owns what and all those kinds of things, division of assets, all that. I think it's a much cleaner deal for us to just go together with the three cities and try to gain the governance of the district back from the county. So with that, Commissioner Smith?
Have we heard any updates that we can talk about tonight? I don't, I don't know that we've heard anything different.
Not really, other than if you didn't see the, uh, Commissioner Chair Ludlow sent out a letter this afternoon, which is basically saying the same thing, that, uh, you know, that this is really a regional thing, and, you know, we need to look at this regionally. I at least think that our responsibility first lies with the ratepayers and the citizens of Oregon City, and that we have to assure ourselves that they're being treated equitably and reasonably inside the district. Once we're able to have that, then certainly, I am not the guy that's going to say, we're going to turn off the plant and Happy Valley can go their own way, or whatever the case is, you know. We all have to work together, and I think we proved that we can work together as the cities of Clackamas County when we force the county to back down on their gas tax. So.
So I have a couple of questions, um, one of which, there's two, two meetings in the future, one of which is, um, I think another conversation like the three cities conversation that was held at West Lynn was planned for.
Right. And that's the, that's the only discussion we're having tonight, is whether we have that discussion as just the three cities or as the five cities. That's the information I have to, we have to take back to, um, back to that meeting.
But does, but I don't know if the rest of the Commission knows that at the last regional wastewater meeting, that that meeting's dialogue was that it was going to be broader than that.
I wasn't even aware of that.
Well, I...
Because I wasn't there.
Well...
Broader than what?
So, so at the, at the, at the regional, um, meeting that I represented Oregon City at, the conversation at the end of the meeting, um, there was a conversation at the end of the meeting about the meeting that took place in West Lynn. And that, um, there had been another meeting of that group scheduled, and there was concern from, um, unincorporated Clackamas County that they weren't in that dialogue. There was concern from, um, the representative from...
Markley?
Not happy, well, no, he, there was, um, who was... Unincorporated, but then the other, the other, the chair that was...
Oh, Diana Home from Estacada?
From Damascus.
Former, former Damascus.
Damascus?
She was chairing the meeting.
I think Damascus.
Yes, she was the chair of the meeting.
So, so there was concern from those two that they had not been part of that conversation at the, the West Lynn meeting. So a dialogue took place, um, that all parties should be, uh, invited to that meeting. And then everyone kind of, for the most part, agreed to that when they asked what Oregon City thought. I said, well, I can't speak for the entire Commission. I'm not going to speak for the entire Commission about whether or not we feel that's appropriate. Um, but in, honestly, if that was the case and all parties were going to be at that meeting in West Lynn, then it's the same as having a regional meeting anyway.
Right, and the...
Um, so my, my real question is, you know, so if we decide, so I, I don't know that us deciding whether or not it's three, um, parties at this West Lynn meeting or five, that makes any, I don't know that we have control over that.
No, I get it, but that was the question that we were chanting, that we were, uh, challenged to, to answer and come back to that meeting with.
Right.
And I, I think that, to, to be clear about what it was that we were doing, originally, that meeting was just supposed to be Oregon City, Gladstone, and West Lynn.
Right.
And Brenda Perry, Council Perry from West Lynn, took it upon herself to add the two people, the, the Happy Valley and Milwaukee to the meeting. Um, in the dialogue, Council Johnson from, uh, Gladstone insisted that they were going to do that, that it had to be noticed in a public meeting and recorded. So that's why we did what we did. Gladstone has already made a decision that they just wish to have the original discussion first about, between the three cities, about, um, the governance solution for tri-cities. Then once that's resolved, we can go to, you know, either add the other two cities or have a further discussion. But I think we need to have, you know, some control for our ratepayers, so. or have a further discussion, but I think we need to have, you know, some control for our ratepayers, so.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it being just the three cities.
I mean, we aren't responsible for regionalization. Uh, you know, and, and it's funny how, um, you know, especially, uh, Chair Ludlow, you know, rails and rails and rails at Metro and yet on this issue, he's all about regionalization. So, I, I just think at this point in time, we need to take control of our plant and our district and our pipes and make sure that we're making good decisions for our ratepayers and then we can negotiate in good faith with CCSD one, whatever that entity might look like.
Is this, if this th- uh, meeting between the three cities takes place, this is a, um, open meeting like the, the last one? Or is this a executive session?
I, I think, I think it could be. I don't have any problem, I mean, you know, I haven't exactly been a, a, you know, a wallflower on this issue anywhere, so.
And then that meeting would take place before the next regional meeting?
Yeah, I think it's currently scheduled for like the 26th, right?
I don't have my calendar with me, uh, on my. That sounds about.
Hmm. For some reason. I don't have it on my schedule. Hold it, set, no, that's impact.
I don't think I have it on mine either.
Legacy project. I'd have to go back in my, uh, I don't think Brenda's actually sent out a meeting request yet.
Okay, so I guess the only concern that I would have is that if we are having a dialog- dialogue as the three cities and that takes place before the regional meeting, it may have some influence on whether or not this commission continues to want me to be at the regional meeting.
Sure, yeah.
And I think that's a question that we need to keep asking ourselves as we go forward.
The intent was for us to have this next meeting prior to the regional wastewater capacity transfer.
But I don't know if we have a meeting as a commission before that or if it matters.
One next Wednesday.
Right, so.
Yeah, and then the next one is not until the first Wednesday of October, correct? So, I think.
The point that I'm making is I will continue to go to the regional wastewater meeting until this commission says we shouldn't and I will, you know, which I'm totally fine with, by the way.
So, to, to, to further my concern is now there, there is some process going forward where the regional wastewater committee is going to talk about rates. And we feel like that, at least I feel like, that rates should be a discussion between the three cities, taken through the Tri-City Advisory Committee to the county, not having someone from unincorporated Clackamas County or somebody else making decisions about rates for our, you know, our city. And, and these guys have a tendency to load these committees in such a way that, um, you know, we get overwhelmed. Um, I thought that Diana Helm was going to be off of the committee once Damascus went incorporated. Well, all of a sudden now she's here and they're saying they're waiting to vote differently. You know, the voting doesn't really matter because no matter what this advisory committee does or says, the county's gonna do what they're gonna do. So, I think at some point we have to say, listen, you know, because i- if we continue to go and they raise our citizens' rates, you know, 30%, they're gonna say, well, Oregon City was at the table. If we protest and say, we're not participating here anymore because we have no decision-making power, then at least we can say to our folks, listen, we tried our best and it wasn't gonna work, so, you know, they couldn't say that we were at the table when they did what they did. But the question tonight is, cause I have another meeting at seven, do you prefer that we just go stand our ground and say, no, we think we gotta be the three cities first and then have the five-city discussion? Or do you wanna start talking with all five of us now?
What are the, uh, financial implications, I guess, for, for five cities versus three?
Well, I think that's a, I mean, that's a huge unknown amongst other things, which is why we feel like, um, while it's not clean, it's much cleaner for us to take over Tri-City first. Um, the, the, there are quite a bit more bright lines there than there would be if, you know, you start messing with the two cities and then unincorporated and, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. Uh, for me, the biggest question mark moving part is the fact that Happy Valley doesn't own any of their infrastructure. Where all the rest of us cities, we own the pipes in the ground. Well, Happy Valley doesn't own their pipes.
And they're, they're the highest growth area.
Yeah, and that, and so that, that fundamentally changes the financial dynamic in Happy Valley and how they, you know, if, if they were to separate from CCSD one or something else, how do they ma- you know, how do, how do they pay for those because they didn't pay for them originally?
I'd prefer to go to the three cities like it was.
Okay.
And that we take over the governance.
And then move forward.
And move forward, and then we can expand from there.
Okay.
As we've seen, when you get too many cities involved and too many entities, nothing gets done. And, uh, I think if we can narrow the scope down now, we could probably get moving on, um, capital improvements that are supposedly gonna be needed, so. As long as the three cities are financially able to do these things, so. But we'll address that probably when we need to do that and that may be the five cities that need to do that.
You know, I, I, sort of like South Fork, you know, theoretically, this is all paid for through rates. But, you know, there would, i- i- if there were to be some form of governance change, there would have to be an audit and there would be, you know, people like Wyatt involved and other people looking at all the numbers and counting beans in the different jars and all that stuff. And, and then we'd, then, then we'd figure it out. But, you know, generally speaking, you know, you pay your sewer bill and the sewer runs downhill and it gets treated.
So, where I'm going at is that it was in 2008, Rocky, your favorite year, you remember? And the Tri-Cities could not afford to do what was necessary at the plant there and then we invited the county to help us with that.
It was prior to that.
Yeah, but I, I think we got hoodwinked a little bit about.
Well, I'm just saying that, uh, we did not have the capacity to do it, what needed to be done, so we had to have help. I just don't wanna be in that position again.
Right. Well, and that's something that would be worked out. Mr. Ied, where are you?
I just need to be, get up to speed on all this.
Commissioner Mangenberg?
Seems like we would like to hear from our Republican Course Director, right?
I just wanted to say something. I, I think one thing that would help, especially for those agencies that maybe, well, any, any of the agencies other than, um, Gladstone and Oregon City. You said something about, I'm not, you know, we're not proposing we, we kinda close the valve kinda thing. Some guiding principles that would, or some, some message that would, you know, provide some level of certainty that, you know, I don't even know why they think we would go there, but, um, you know, they, they seem to go there in the public meetings.
Because the county's whispering in their ear.
But I'm, I'm just saying that more of an official kind of, uh, position on that would be, would, would, would probably go a long ways to dispelling some of the, the atrocities that come out in these letters from the county that suggests.
Atrocities might be a little harsh word, John.
I haven't read the letter, so I just saw the newspaper article, but somehow trying to, um, dispel that with some assurances, right?
Right, okay.
It seems like it would help.
Commissioner Mangenberg?
Well, it makes sense to me that the historic partners in the treatment plant would be a logical place to start, um, with the understanding that, you know, the neighboring cities and others would continue to be served. It's just a question of how much, it's not whether.
Right, and, and I have never, and, and Commissioner Smith can attest to this, I've never foreclosed the, the, the opportunity or the, the possibility that some other, you know, this might morph into something else.
Right.
Um, okay, well, I think I have, I have my guidance.
Do you have the request about Oregon consensus?
Oh, yes, I was just headed there. So, did all of you see the letter from Chair Ludlow today?
I did not.
Basically, he wants us to join this thing where Bobby Lee and his group would come in and sort of mediate a, a solution, but that would include all of these other players, including the, the, you know, unincorporated representatives and the county commission and all that stuff. It's my opinion that we should just say, we're not gonna make any decision on having anything to do with that process until after the first Tuesday in November. Cause we don't know who we're gonna be working with.
That seems fair enough.
Well, and after we have a meeting with the three cities.
Right, but I mean, I think we could send it back right now and say, we're not even gonna talk about, you know, having some kind of mediation, uh, with Oregon consensus until we know who our partners are gonna be and, and we don't, you know, we don't have to say anything meaner than that.
But would that be good to be coming on the same letter from all three cities, okay? I'm trying to build a little consensus on our side on the three cities.
Okay, well, all right, I, I can, I can see your point there.
That it's time to start consolidating this and have a, have a, have a full front on this, so.
I mean, I'd be more willing to say have Oregon consensus meet with the three of us.
We don't need it.
Cause I mean, so, you know, I mean, I mean, having a neutral third party in the room might not be a bad idea.
Good, yeah, yeah.
All right, that's all I have. Mr. Mang, you got anything?
Uh, just a reminder that, um, we have the, uh, the City of Oregon City's partnering with Oregon State Marine Board and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife for a discussion about the boat rep at Clackamas Park. That'll be taking place here at City Hall on, uh, what is it, Thursday, September 15th, from six o'clock to eight o'clock. So, just wanted to remind folks that that'll be happening.
How, how, what is the structure for that or what is the?
How is Thursday a 16th?
15th, I'm sorry, 15th.
Oh, okay.
Is it just an open house or is it?
Well, there's two speakers.
There's gonna be, uh, speakers and then more, it's very, gonna be more informal.
Are they showing proposals or?
Um, I don't believe so, I think they're discussing, but I, I can follow up with you. Um, so providing information on the relocation permitting process and estimated timeline, um, for, for the boat ramp. I can get you some more details from Denise and specifically who's presenting and what they're presenting.
So, you, oh, that's already on there. So, Saturday we also have the pickleball open house thing.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's Saturday, the 17th, 10 a.m.
Car show, Main Street car show's also Saturday. So, you'll probably have to go up to the pickleball thing, so.
Well, I have to go, I'm gonna be out that direction, but I, my meeting starts at like, I think nine o'clock at Rolling Hills. I don't know how long I'm gonna have to be there. I have to go to the Republican Senate Committee meeting to, um, get, uh, them to sign off on the sea safe thing.
Yeah, so we need, uh, probably a commissioner could go up to that pickleball thing. I know Rocky.
I thought you were a pickleball rep.
Well, yes, but I have a Main Street, I got a car show to put on Saturday, so.
Oh, okay.
Me and Rocky do.
Well.
And Nancy.
Nancy?
New optimist member right there.
Oh, well, well, she's new. And she's new to the commission too, so can you go up to the pickleball thing for a while?
Uh, well, I, Renata and I were planning to do campaigning that day.
Well, I might remind you that neither one of you are opposed, but.
No, you don't need to remind me. She and I need to have that conversation.
All right, all right.
I'd be happy to go represent us at the pickleball thing.
We don't need to, yeah, I mean, you don't need to spend a bunch of time, you know.
For a little bit.
Ten or 15 minutes or whatever it takes.
Perfect place to campaign.
Show the flag.
They've actually, oh, there you go, this would be the second time, cause I did the first one.
Okay, anybody else for the good of the order? Uh, we do, oh, I talked about that. And then I've got next week, uh, both the Willamette Falls locks and Willamette Falls Legacy Group Partners meetings amongst whatever else Tony throws at.
And I'll be going to that too.
Okay, then we're adjourned.